This is Henry Migala with East County Magazine here with Patricia Dillard, who's running for one of the two open seats in the La Mesa City Council. Born and raised in San Diego, Patricia's professional life has spanned over forty years, including currently serving as the Vice Chair of the Community Police Oversight Board for La Mesa. Welcome Patricia, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, thank you Henry, it's good to be with you.
Well, we're grateful for making time because I know as a candidate you're exceedingly busy, especially on top of your family and professional life, so thank you. So I mentioned just a brief little bit about your background. Tell us about your background, how you got here and what motivated you to run for the La Mesa City Council?
Oh my, that's a mouthful. Yes, I've lived in La Mesa for over twenty-seven years and we've always been passionate about our family and education and, you know, doing right by our children. So we raised them, you know, in a rooted environment. They attended all three schools here in La Mesa, which is La Mesa Dale Elementary, La Mesa Middle School, which is now La Mesa Arts Academy. And all three graduated from Helix High School. And now I'm just pretty much, you know, my husband and I are empty nesters. And we, you know, have always given back in one way or another to our community. My husband was a pastor for almost fifteen years. And so we've always found ways to try to help people. And it's just really in our hearts to do so. The most recent thing that I have done with the city of La Mesa is I do serve as the Vice Chair for the Community Police Oversight Board. And over almost three years now, it's going on three years now, we've worked really hard with the police department, especially with the Chief of Police, who has really leaned in to listen to us. And we wanted to lean in and listen to him and the concerns of the police department and also listen to our community and what it, you know, what it was that our residents are, you know, their expectations of the police department. And, you know, we've really come up with some really great ideas and are on a very good track with the police department to make sure that our residents, we're doing what our residents expect us to do and that we are addressing more current issues that, you know, have arisen in the past several years regarding to the police department. I will say that regarding the police department that, you know, we've, you know, established a very good relationship and that we have some excellent police officers who are providing excellent service to our community and we're very proud of that. I also am the co-chair for the La Mesa Juneteenth and Friends Event. We had our inaugural this year. And we were able to establish over forty volunteers from our community, which I think is amazing in itself, that we had that many people that contributed their time, effort and money to help put the event together. And when we held it, we were hoping, because we were listening to what the city was telling us, that, you know, hopefully we'll get like, you know, two hundred and fifty people to attend because it's brand new and nobody knows, you know, what's gonna happen. And we ended up with almost fifteen hundred people that attended the event. And we really focused the event on, of course, family fun and music entertainment. We had the MLK Choir that came and we also had one of the singers sing solos and people were just absolutely paralyzed in listening to her. She had this most beautiful voice. And we also involved a lot of children and we thought that was important. And then we introduced history throughout the park. It was held at MacArthur Park. And we were just ecstatic, our residents were so happy and our vendors were excited about it, between the food and all of the vendors, you know, our residents and people from outside the city of La Mesa came in and really supported our vendors. And they all said that they can't wait for next year, that they would definitely be there. And the city also told us they couldn't wait to meet with us again so they could tell us, you know, that you need to expect double the amount in the next year. So we're very excited about that as well. So it's been all about community for me. It's been about making sure that we do things to help bring our city together and that we share in our diversity as much as we can and really celebrate one another's diversity. And, you know, and just really focus on what's important for La Mesa. And that's why I'm running. I'm gonna, I want to take it to the next level. And I know that if I serve as a city council member, I will be able to do that and make changes for the city of La Mesa.
I paralyzed people with my singing also, but probably for very different reasons. I went to the Juneteenth event and it was a beautiful, wonderful, community reconnecting event. It was very nice.
Thank you, thank you. We got great press that day, by the way.
I wrote about it.
Yeah, we made it to the, we were on the front page of the Union Tribune the very next day. And we also got coverage from every network on the evening news that night of Juneteenth. And so we were very pleased, very shocked. And it was just such a positive experience. And we look forward to the next event and sharing more history with people. And, you know, not in a preachy way either. You know, everything was done very professionally and, you know, displayed where people could learn what they wanted to learn. It wasn't forceful at all. And it was just, it was really about the celebration of the jubilee and then people understanding exactly why they need to join in and celebrate with us.
Excellent, thank you for that. I went through your website and saw some of your priorities. I wanted to talk to you about some of the issues you have identified for yourself as priorities. Your number one was public safety. Before the COVID epidemic, La Mesa experienced the social unrest in May 2020 and the riot and the arson. What do you see as the underlying cause of that unrest?
You know, people have different information about that. We actually started our task force way before that. We started out, it was, we were holding public meetings starting in January of 2020. There was a lot of things that were going on nationwide, not necessarily directly in La Mesa during that time. So I think that when that actually happened in La Mesa, I think there were a lot of people that were very surprised, very disappointed and upset for many reasons. But what I generally understood it to be turned out to be a little bit different once we got more concrete information. We received an after-action report, which is a, you know, it's this, a book this thick. So you don't want to really necessarily read it. But we were able to meet with that firm, that law firm, to get more explanation, more clearance, more clarification, I should say, on exactly what their outcome was in regards to that event. And I also, you know, I walk, knock and talk to voters. And I got a lot of feedback from them, which I thought was especially important, especially the people who actually could see what was going on because they live up in the hills above like the Yvonne Shopping Center and they were able to describe to me exactly what they saw. And that was a peaceful protest that went on for some time and then suddenly turned into a violent situation because there were people that came from outside of the city of La Mesa and were specifically there to, you know, cause problems and cause violence. And so it was just a super unfortunate event that happened during the time that there was a lot of unrest throughout the nation. And, you know, some of those cases are still in court and cannot be discussed now that I serve as the Vice Chair for the Community Police Oversight Board. But I will say that, working with the Chief, we feel very confident that we have worked very hard to make sure that that never happens again for our city. And we do have a new Chief of Police. The one that was, you know, in that position was the prior Chief of Police. And so everything has been readdressed, reassessed and we have worked hard to move forward to make sure that we're doing everything we can with our community. And that, and that, you know, I think that sometimes too, no one knows that anything is wrong until something happens, right? And then, of course, it's like, what, you know? So the fact that the community is quieter, that crime is down and that, you know, we've had a chance to meet our very hardworking, dedicated police officers. I feel good that the work that we have done has really helped. And that it's, you know, because the thing is, is that you don't want to make our police officers feel like they're not wanted or they're not needed. Because what would the community be without public safety? And public safety is our police department and our fire department. If we don't have those two services available for our city, what in the world do we have? So, you know, their focus is to take care of us and we want to make sure that they know that we care about them and that we need them here and that we appreciate their service that they do provide for our city.
Yeah, we've gone through that event or those series of events in La Mesa and other places in East County. We've been shut down for COVID for two years and we've had that Community Place Oversight Board. How do you see us coming out of the pandemic? Is the police department reformed? What more, if not, what else do you think needs to be done?
Well, we have so much going for us right now. It's a combination of the city, the police department and the fire department all working in unison to do everything that they can to protect our city. There's been a lot of programs that have been implemented, especially for our issues with homelessness. And there's other programs that are going on in the city to help with people that are struggling to, you know, that are actually on the verge of homelessness. So there's a lot of services that the city has been making available and that has helped. But obviously, we need to, you know, collaborate more and do more for our city and our outlying cities because they affect us, especially when it comes to homelessness. But overall, I think that we're on the right track. I don't, I don't know if you're ever done, you know, where you can say, okay, this is it. We're done here. Because there's always something that comes up that we feel that we need to address. But when I have conversations with Chief Sweeney, the one thing that I see that he is, is a person who thinks ahead. He's experienced enough that he knows what could possibly be issues and he's ahead of it so that it doesn't become an issue. And I think that, you know, if you're a police officer, you certainly know things that other people who don't specialize in, you know, criminal justice or, you know, policing would ever know. And so it's great to have other information coming from police officers who actually can share their experiences with you so that you could see what may be needed ahead of time for the police force. And I really like the way that the Chief, you know, addresses those issues before they become a big issue. So I think it's important that the Community Police Oversight Board is important because it keeps everybody on their toes, that they're constantly working and looking ahead to address anything that is needed now and anything potentially.
Your second big issue is homelessness, as everybody and everywhere is the issue. You say on your website, "We can solve homelessness and housing insecurity in our community." How?
Yeah, it's a big job. Part of it is what I mentioned before, collaboration with nonprofit organizations who specialize in homelessness. But I would like more emphasis on mental health. I believe that it is an underlying big part of homelessness. It's something that we can't ignore any longer. It should actually be a part of, you know, any homeless situation. People should be entitled to get help, get counseling. I do have a brother who is homeless and it's a struggle for me. It's very hard for me, it's very painful to talk to him, who, you know, I know to be, you know, the person that I grew up with, which was a very smart individual who has always done extremely well in the field of construction. He, you know, remodeled homes, helped build homes. He's very, very highly talented. But now that he's homeless, I feel like when I talk to him, you know, in his mind, he feels that he's okay. He'll just like stay right here and do this thing, whatever this thing is. And for me, I'm looking at him like, are you crazy? You're homeless, like what are you talking about, you know? And I think that, to be honest with you, he's scared. He's scared. And I see this in a lot of homeless people. They're scared, they're scared to talk to you, they don't know who to trust. They can't find their way where it would be comfortable for a change, you know? And so I think that counseling and, you know, talking over a period of time can help a lot of people overcome that. And I think that when you're talking about homelessness, it should be working with a person or a family, whoever that might be, from the beginning to the end. You know, you don't just throw them in some motel room for twenty-four hours or whatever, you know, give them something to eat and then they go back out to create the whole cycle all over again. And so I think that we need to have, you know, we need to have more a hundred percent affordable housing for those who are on the verge of homelessness, who are working but yet still not able to make ends meet. And I also believe that we need key housing for people who want the help. They want to get out of that situation and are willing to allow professionals that can work with them from the beginning to the end so that they can get up on their feet and become productive citizens in our community or wherever it is that they decide to live after the fact. But, you know, you can't do it with just, you know, throwing them, you know, a hot meal and, you know, giving them a room for a night. It just needs to be more cohesive. And the thing is, is with La Mesa, is we have the highest trolley stops per capita in the county of San Diego. So you have people coming in from El Cajon and Santee and Lemon Grove and Spring Valley and, you know, Encanto, different places. They can ride in, stop over for a while and then go to another city. And so we need to collaborate with other cities that have specialties in different areas, you know, because it could be spousal abuse or just abuse of some kind. It could be a lot of variety of different things that cause a person to be homeless or on the verge of homelessness. And so we need to collaborate with our, you know, as a regional base so that we're helping one another. So if these people are going back and forth between La Mesa and other cities that we're, you know, getting the people help that are wanting to get the help. I don't know if you'll ever eliminate homelessness, but we can definitely reduce it and help the people who want to get helped.
It's a good segue because you mentioned needing affordable housing. Well, what's your view on the appropriate scale, height, density of housing in La Mesa? You know, how do you balance the need of more homes versus the concerns for over-parking, community character and preserving the charm in a historic downtown district? You know, the community character of nice La Mesa, you know, with the need for increased density of housing and higher-rise housing? And how do you balance that?
Well, I don't think there's just one way. I think that there's a couple of different ways. One of them is that we can't stop people from coming to La Mesa, just like you can't stop people from moving wherever they want to move. This is a free country. But we understand why they want to come to La Mesa because that's why people love La Mesa. It's a great place to be. And there's a lot that La Mesa has to offer. So for those who want to live here, there is a struggle with a median household because when you talk about affordable housing, it's really supposed to be that you don't pay more than thirty percent of your income. Well, if your income is fifty thousand dollars a year and you are looking for housing that only, you know, requires for you to pay thirty percent of the fifty thousand dollar budget, you still don't qualify to get a, you know, a place in a lot of places here in La Mesa. So that's why I mentioned having a hundred percent affordable housing as an option. However, when it comes to new build, I still think that we can do things that address several issues. One is it addresses our environment, it addresses public safety and it also addresses our ability to make more walkable spaces or bikeable spaces and use less cars, less, you know, lower our emissions here in La Mesa. By, since we have to build, if we build more along the trolley lines, we eliminate a lot of the issues with traffic. If you have a project, and I shouldn't say project, but a construction project where you can only have one car per unit, then that encourages people who move into that apartment unit, for instance, to, you know, yes, they can have a car, but it also encourages them to walk and catch the trolley. And if you have it on the trolley line and you have it near the trolley stations, that's helpful and keeps down, you know, the traffic potentially with the city. And in addition to that, include affordable housing in those builds. And like I said, some of them can be a hundred percent and some of them can be percentages of the build. But nevertheless, you know, we have to build and so we can do that. Another thing is thinking about first-time homebuyers. You know, I did loans for a very long time and it was always a dream, you know, for even for my husband and I to own a home. And we, you know, we bought our first home in another area that we could afford and then, you know, lived there long enough to accumulate the appreciation so that we could use it for our next home. And eventually ended up in La Mesa, you know, twenty-seven years ago. We can now build condos and townhomes. And to address the walkability, yes, downtown La Mesa is a great popular place for people to go, but it shouldn't be the only place. We have the ability to build in where there's vacant lots and dilapidated buildings that are sitting on vacant lots or sitting on lots that aren't being used at all, where we can go in and possibly build condos and townhomes in those areas and apartments and make another walkable location like the west end of El Cajon Boulevard. We have, there's a lot of empty lots there in between businesses and, you know, other things that are going on there, small squares, schools, et cetera. And I would like to see another area for people to be able to have walkable, bikeable spaces with charging stations as well as supplied with our downtown, you know, the village. You know, don't break what's not broken. I mean, we have a great downtown location for people to go, but we have over sixty-three thousand people that live in La Mesa. So we need to have other places for people to feel comfortable to go as well because we need more businesses here and we need businesses to be able to thrive here so that we can offer our communities, the community of La Mesa, everything that, you know, that people that live here would like to have. And we prefer options. You don't have to go one place or another, you have options and people love that. They love that ability. So I think we can do it all in a nutshell. We could do it all. We may not get there in a year or two, but we can get there with a plan.
Your next issue is of course, like many people, the economy. You write that "I will work to build pathways to good-paying, middle-class jobs through traineeships, apprenticeships, continuing education and other programs." How does a city council member do that when it seems to be the realm of the education sector rather than the city council?
Yeah, the way that I see doing it, or the way that I envision doing it, is to work through educational avenues like our local schools, our library. What I would like to see is people that can have ways to be informed on what's available to them, especially through unions. Unions offer full-time work with training and full benefits, healthcare, dental care, eye care. And they also include retirement accounts, pensions. You can actually get your training while being paid with a lot of these unions and get certified in different fields. There's so many different fields, a huge variety of fields where people can apply for these jobs, get these jobs and have what you call, you know, a working family wage, where you can afford to pay your rent or your mortgage and you can afford to put food on the table and take care of your children. And you can afford to, you know, buy a car or whatever is needed for yourself and your family. And so there are ways to help connect. A lot of these unions that are working right here, not just in La Mesa, but throughout the county of San Diego, where people can get jobs. You don't have to have, some of them, you don't even have to have a diploma. Some of them you do, but there's many to choose from. And I would like to see more people who maybe, you know, not everybody can go to college, not everybody wants to go to college. But there are still things that are out there that pay living wages where they can still do well and support themselves and their families.
The other thing you mentioned is "I will work to ensure that our local working families have access to well-paying local jobs." How do you do that?
Well, just like I said, we have jobs that are right here in La Mesa that people can apply for. You know, think about it, we have Kaiser here. We have, you know, tons of businesses here, both large and small.
But as a city council member, how do you make that happen? That seems to be the efforts of the industry.
It is true, but, you know, you can do that through network marketing. There's a lot of businesses that need to be supported. Um, there's a lot of businesses that need to be supported here in La Mesa and they need to hire people. And, um, you know, there's ways to use network media to get the word out about those businesses. And, um, also tag other businesses through, uh, you know, uh, either Twitter or Instagram or Facebook. You know, it, it's, it's, people do see those and, uh, hook up, uh, with, um, you know, maybe, uh, a, a particular job that they, uh, would consider applying for. And also too, there's groups, uh, that are in like, uh, places like Facebook where they're business groups. Uh, you can join those networks and learn about what, you know, different, um, businesses are doing and, uh, you know, talk to the, the, the businesses that, that are here. I mean, I'm a person that if I, if I want a job, I'm going to do everything that I can to get it. And I'm not gonna take no for an answer and I'm gonna keep talking to people until I find, um, find or find a way to, you know, to get myself hired. And, you know, everyone has to work to get what they, you know, what they want in their lives. And I believe that we can encourage them through, you know, local schools, our public schools, as well as through our network that we already have right here in La Mesa with our businesses.
Your last big issue is education and you talked about on your website that our kids, uh, lost a lot during the pandemic close down. And you mentioned, um, that the city should play a role in filling the gap between the school and the home. Is that really the city's role or, and how does the city do that? How does the city fill the gap between the school and the home?
Well, I think that there are grants that we can make available to help with students who, number one, either, for whatever reason, did not have internet connection because that was one of the biggest issues that people talked about. Uh, unfortunately, even internet connection and having the ability to do school online wasn't ideal for many, many children. And so that's what I mean by the loss. But we have ways that we can communicate with, um, our educators to make sure that we are filling the gaps that where they say is needed. Uh, where we can use, uh, grants to help subsidize for people that are in need. Uh, uh, especially when it comes to those specific gaps that the educators are telling us that they are experiencing and trying to help and make sure we're getting to all of the children that need that help.
Um, Patricia, we're getting to the end of our time. I wanted to ask you, what are your most significant endorsements? And where can people get more information about your candidacy or volunteering or donating to it?
Well, you can go to patricia dillard dot com. You can click on donate or you can click on volunteer. That's available. It actually pops up on my screen. Um, and as far as my endorsements are concerned, you can click on endorsements. I'm endorsed by Dr. Akilah Weber. Uh, I was last year. She has never, uh, left my side. She's continued to endorse me and felt that I was the right person to fill, uh, in her shoes. And I, I do promise to, uh, continue to do the work that she did, which was to focus on the people of La Mesa and continue to help them in any way that I can, uh, as a city council member. Uh, I'm also endorsed by, uh, the mayor, uh, uh, Dr. A, as, as people fondly like to call him. And also, um, I'm endorsed by almost the entire city council. Um, I am endorsed by, uh, Sarah Jacobs, uh, who is our Congresswoman for this, um, uh, entire area. And, uh, I'm also endorsed by, uh, uh, for, uh, people who know her. She is our state senator, uh, Terry, I'm sorry. Um, uh, oh my God, my, my head just went, uh, Tony G. Atkins. I'm sorry about that. Um, she also has endorsed me as well as Dr. Uh, Shirley Weber, who is our Secretary of State. Um, I'm also, um, endorsed locally by a lot of other council members like, uh, uh, Jennifer Mendoza, who is a city council member in Lemon Grove, as, as well as uh, Marcus Bush, who's a city council member in National City. Um, the list goes on. Monica Montgomery Step, who is a city council member out of, uh, San Diego City. Um, she's a city council member there and, um, it, it, a lot of community members support me and endorse me and are looking forward to me working on their behalf in the city of La Mesa. And, um, so it, the, it's, it's a long list. So, but that's, I mean, some people that I can think of up, off the top of my head.
Well, we got about one minute left. Is there anything you wanna finally say for your, our listeners and readers?
Uh, I, I, I just wanna say that, uh, there are two positions open. I hope that you will consider, uh, choosing me, uh, to be, uh, on that, one of those seats. Um, and I, um, I think that, uh, you should know that I'm a person that cares about people. And I, I want to continue to take care of the people of La Mesa at, uh, as best I can and that I will work very hard, uh, to make sure that um, I'm doing the best that I can. I'm not a perfect person, um, but I am a hard-working person. And so I will stay dedicated and focused on taking care of our community. And you should know that I am rooted here in La Mesa, always been supportive of La Mesa. And our kids love La Mesa and even though they're grown and out of the house, um, they still love La Mesa. And so we're gonna stay right here and continue to help and assist in any way we can. And I appreciate their support. And vote.
Well, we've enjoyed our time with, uh, La Mesa City Council candidate, Patricia Dillard. Thank you for your time. You've been very gracious. You've been very selfless with your time. Thank you for joining us.
And thank you for having me. I really appreciate you and, um, I hope you have a great rest of the day.
And you too.